Joel, snack.
I think I'll be speaker for consent item. Then we have a question.
Can I have your honor?
Why don't you two go together?
Okay, good. You two. Yes. No, we're three of us. We're trying to write together. So now I can. Okay. So just shut it. It'll be the chair. So. All right. We got one.
Just go. Okay. Okay. Everyone, we should call the meeting to order. Morehead City Council, it's 5:31 PM, Monday, February 11th, 2019. Can we have a roll call, please?
Shelley Dahlquist.
Here.
Sarah Watson Curry.
Here.
Shelley Carlson.
Here.
Heidi Durand.
Here.
Joel Paulson.
Deb White.
Here.
Steve Gertz.
Here.
Chuck Hendrickson.
Here.
Mayor Judd.
Here. May we please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. In the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Are there any agenda amendments?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, there are three, or four, excuse me, amendments. Items number 11 and 12 are being requested to take off consent. Item number 8A, there is a new handout that will replace the item that was on the agenda, and we will upload that to the website. They were on each of your chairs. And number 18, there is a handout to replace the one that was attached to the agenda.
Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda with those amendments as stated by Madam Volkerds?
So moved.
Motion made by Councilmember Hendrickson, seconded by Councilmember Watson Curry. All in favor of said motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Move to number five, recognitions, presentations.
Mr. Mayor, that will be Steve Moore and Paul Feigner, who Paul's our facilities manager and Steve's our public works director, I believe, are presenting.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council members. A little while back, we were asked to come in and talk about our facilities and condition assessment and give an update on what that program was. Back in 2016, in December of 2016, we had a contractor come in and review all of our facilities and establish a condition assessment and give them ratings. And Paul's going to brief that, and then we're also going to run through our proposed, our 2019 facility improvement, capital improvement program for your review and answer any questions and talk about some other items regarding facilities. So with that said, I'll just introduce Paul Feigner, our facilities and fleet manager.
Hi. Good afternoon. Yeah, as Steve said, I'll be reviewing the facilities that we have and the condition they're in and talk about what our plan is here in the future to address some of the items. A quick overview of the presentation here, like we talked, like Steve talked about, is the facility condition assessment. Basically, that study with the contractors developed a database where we house all of our facility information, talk about the current conditions of the facilities, and then I would like to review the process that we use for selecting facility projects, talk about the 2019 capital improvement plan, and then a little discussion on the future planning and vision for our facilities. So as Steve said, inspections were completed in December of 2016 where contractors came in and reviewed our facilities and the condition they were in. They developed a database, which is called Builder, and much of what that database works off is each asset is assigned a condition index rating. The condition index is based on the asset service life and then also the inspection data. And one thing to remember with the database is it is living, constantly changing based on what information we put into it or what we want from it. So it is something we can continue to use as we manage our facilities. So the condition index is, as I said earlier, calculated based on the asset age and the inspection, and it gives it a number. Basically, 85 to 100 is green, the condition's in good condition. 84 to 70, it's amber, which is where we would start seeing maybe some maintenance costs go up but relatively serviceable. And then when it's 69 or below, we would see a, it's estimated that we would see a higher amount of maintenance cost for that item, and we should consider or at least review replacement or repair. Another example here is kind of how that, the computer graphs it out. This is the boiler here in City Hall, and kind of as time goes by, it shows how the the condition index of the asset goes down. And then what you can also do with the system is summarize the facility as a whole. So this is just a snapshot of City Hall, and it has the various systems, the electrical, HVAC plumbing, and it assigns a condition to each of those systems within the facility itself. So with that information, we can talk about the current condition of our facilities, just as, and as an example, we'll start with City Hall here with some of the information that's stored in the database. Built in 1971, 37,500 square feet, estimates the replacement cost of the building at roughly $10 million. And then the last item is the sum of the red-rated work items. And what that is, is that's all of the assets in City Hall that have reached that 69 or lower rating, and that's, they call them red-rated at that point. So the building as a whole, when you take a look at all of the conditions of all the systems, it rates it at 67. And here it gives a more detailed breakout of each system within the facility and what that condition is at. Next slide here, what I did is took the facilities and just graphed them out where the overall facility condition is rated and put them on the graph there. You can see the ones that are red, the ones that are amber, and the ones that are green. As far as this presentation here, I just wanted to show you guys City Hall, but I can go into any of these facilities if you have any questions or anything you want to dig into deeper. Also included in the facility condition assessment is the neighborhood recreational centers, so they're all on this slide also showing their condition and how they are So earlier I mentioned the red-rated items, basically all of the assets that have fallen below that, into that red area. What this slide shows is each facility and the tabulated cost for replacing the assets that are in the red. If you take a look at the full total for the, for the city is 4.6 million. When we talk about planning and looking to at our facilities in the future, there's a few that we can take off the list here. The sports center, which is being transferred to the school district here in July, the transfer station, which we have plans in place to build a new facility partnered with Clay County, and then also Usher's House, which is the American Legion Building. If we take those totals off of the list, it brings us down to 3.4 million as far as red-rated items. And this would be currently in 2019 as far as all of the items this year or prior.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Paul, did you take off the sports center, you said?
Yes.
Okay. Because we're selling it to the school district?
Yeah.
Or sold it to, okay. Thanks.
So another thing the database allows us to do where all of the facility data is project what our costs will be in the future. So that's what this graph shows. Here in 2019, it's showing everything prior to 2019, including 2019. When we move into 2020, there'll be another $500,000 worth of items, and then in 2021, you'll see a small spike there, or a spike of 2.2 million, and it just gives us a chance to project it out and see what the needs are of the facilities in the future. So moving on to that, as you guys know, we don't have $3.4 million to work on our facilities in our 2019 budget, so review our capital plan. Some of the factors that I put into play when determining the priority of which projects we're actually going to do out of this 3.4 million is first, safety. If it's something that impacts the safety of employees or cities, or citizens of the city, obviously want to make sure that's addressed right away. The impact to service, if something were to go down that would impact city employees and their ability to do their job or perform their service. And then also the individual building priority and the impact it has on the budget. So I won't bore you with the flow chart here, but there is a process, starting with the data, database with the facility information. From that, it took time to validate the condition of those items and then also prioritize them. The next step was to sit down and meet with the building users, so the main person for each facility, making sure that their goals and what they see with their facility is in line with what we have from the database and what's in the plan there. From there, wanted to make sure it's in line with our 20-year plan, which I'll talk about later. And then the 2019 capital plan was briefed with the city manager and the executive leadership team to make sure all departments are in line with what we're doing and where we're spending our funds. Furthermore, the, what we're doing now is briefing the city council on what the plan is, and from there, we will finalize the plan and start executing projects. And then it just goes full circle there. Once we have the capital plan, it can be fed into the budget for future years, and then that, what feedback we get from the budget goes back into what we can accomplish for future projects. Quick snapshot of the 2018 capital improvement projects. This is what was done here in 2018, totally 1.2 million on the facilities. This came from various revenue streams, or not revenue, excuse me, budget streams. And then the next slide here is the 2019 project. So after we went, after I went through the whole process there, came up with 23 capital improvement projects for 2019 to execute. Yeah?
Mr.? My apologies. Mr. Feigner, so these are projects that have already been budgeted for, like these will be worked on?
Yes. The 2019 budget is for $700,000 for capital improvements, and then these are the projects that were selected to, to do with those funds.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification.
And I won't go through all of these one by one, but if you do see any you want to discuss further or get some more detail on, I can do that.
Mayor Judd? If I could ask a question, could?
My apologies.
Yes. Could we just go back to the 2018? I just was curious about the library project. So it said for the public library, repair foundation basement leak, and with that one, it just says monitor condition. So does that mean it hasn't been repaired and we're just?
So there, there's a crack in the foundation that was having water come in, and there was a minor repair done to it.
Okay.
And we've just been monitoring it. We haven't seen any further issues with water coming through.
Okay.
So it hasn't completely been closed out because we're not 100% confident, but once we go through this spring and we don't have any further issues.
Okay. So it's budgeted, if we were to repair it, $50,000, $35,000, but right now, we're just sort of waiting to see if we need to spend that money or if we can postpone it?
Correct.
Okay.
I'm sorry. Councilmember Hendrickson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I noticed for the pool, you kind of skipped ahead a little bit. We have electrical at a 44 for building condition. What's going on with that? And it's not up in the 2019 projects, but I did skip ahead, and it's, electrical's at 44. Wouldn't that be like a top priority?
Which one are you at? I'm sorry.
I'm on page, what's in the agenda? I think it's page 48. But it's, it's got, it's got a list of every facility, and it's facility summary for the municipal pool, and the building condition index is at 67, and then there's electrical at a 44. I'm kind of wondering, am I not correlating those together correctly?
Oh, okay. Yeah, so the, the computer rated the electrical system at 44? Is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yep. And going back to where the computer gets that, that's, a lot of that's based on age So are you asking why we're not doing anything?
Yeah. I mean, what's the condition of it right now? And I understand the age thing, but what's the condition of it right now?
Right now, right now, it's functioning.
Okay.
I don't have any specifics on, on exactly any defects or anything, but the reason it would be rated at that would be primarily because of the age.
Okay. But has there been any problems with it in the past?
No, not that I'm aware of. Right now, there hasn't been any issues with the electric.
I just, I just think water and electricity and, you know. It's okay.
Yeah, definitely. I don't have any specifics on, on exactly any defects or anything, but the reason it would be rated at that would be primarily because of the age.
Okay. But has there been any problems with it in the past?
No, not that I'm aware of. Right now, there hasn't been any issues with the electric.
I just, I just think water and electricity and, you know, it's okay.
Yeah, definitely.
I wanted to go back to the neighborhood recreation centers. So, and I, and I do appreciate that when we, when we're prioritizing projects, that, you know, things like fire safety is, is, you know, is very important. But I just, overall, when I looked at that, I was just surprised that for our neighborhood recreation centers, that all but three of them are red-rated. And so where do we, has there been discussion of that? Or how do we compare to other communities? And I understand when funds are limited, that that may not make it up the list in terms of priorities. But it was surprising to me just to see how few of our recreation centers were not red-rated.
Yeah, definitely. And that's something we addressed, or one thing I'm looking at right now. Eight of the recreational centers were built in 1989, and they're all of the same vintage. And that's something in the 2019 plan, it would be number 14, is.
That's right.
What I'd like to look into is what we can do to renovate a lot of them. A replacement of that facility is estimated in the 200,000 to 300,000. But what I'm wanting to do is take a look at them, and specifically the ones that were built in the 80s have a lot of similar issues with them. So packaging a renovation where we can renovate one or two a year and, and get them back up to a, a green health and keep them serviceable. So definitely, that's in the plan.
Councilmember Hertz?
Yeah, I'm presuming the reason why a lot of them fell below that 70 rating is because a lot of it has to do with the age. So, they're just like right on the border where just this little bit of renovation probably put them in, into the next category. And so, I, I think what you're doing is a good, good plan.
Okay.
Ms. Volkers?
Mr. Mayor, Paul, I want to remind the council that last year, you passed a policy that if we sell any buildings that our city owned, that 75% of the sales price would go back towards these red-rated items. So while we don't have 3.4 million dollars for the really urgent ones, we did just sell the former Usher's House, and that 75% of that sale price will go in to assist with this and get us further down the list. So I'm not sure if the whole council knew that, so.
Thank you for that clarification. I, I was not aware of that, so, thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Fickner?
Okay. I'll, I'll move on here real quick. The last part of the presentation is just discussion on future planning. Another thing I'll be working on here is the five-year plan, so kind of repeating the process and coming up with projection on what we can accomplish in the next five years and getting those projects in order and in priority so that we can address them, work them into the plan, and tackle them with, with suitable. And one other item, we're calling a facility task force, which was, hasn't completely been scoped out yet here, but what I'd like to do is put together a group of people, and that would include city manager and someone from the council definitely, to take a look and put together a 20-year outlook on what we want to do with our facilities and essentially provide guidance on the future so that we can scope our facility projects accordingly. You know, an example there is if we are utilizing a facility, we wouldn't want to do a multimillion-dollar renovation to find out two or three years later, we're leaving that facility, right? So that's where we need the, I guess, the vision and the, the long-term scope on how to address the facilities so we can keep them in good condition, but then also spend our money wisely. That's all.
Any other questions for Mr. Fickner? Well, thank you for the report. It really clears up a lot, I know for myself, and breaking it down the way that you had to make it really user-friendly for me, for sure, because that really gives us a pretty good vision of what you're looking at. So I really appreciate your hard work in that. Thank you too, Mr. Moore.
Great, thank you.
Appreciate it, thank you. I believe there is a public hearing.
Mr. Mayor, legal advices that we do, do the citizens addressing the council first.
Okay.
Sorry.
Are there any citizens that wish to address the council that are present currently? Seeing none, then we'll move to the public hearing. And this is public hearing, it's on the agenda number nine, public hearing to consider wastewater treatment facility plan. And then there's some language after that in parentheses that I'm not sure, Madam Volkers, if you can help me out with.
That's, that's our engineering number, so every project that we do, we assign a number to that?
Engineers.
There's a specific code that we, a secret code that we use.
So, okay, so I'll restate with, with Dr. Zimmerman's now breakdown, so it's a public hearing to consider wastewater treatment facility plan, engineering number 18-06-04. So now, the items introduced, can I get a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Motion to open the public hearing made by Councilmember Duran, seconded by Councilmember Carlson. While in favor of said motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
We are now in open hearing.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmembers, Jill, can we put that in presentation more?
Thanks. As, as noted, the, tonight's hearing is to essentially receive public comment on a draft wastewater facility plan. This plan identifies a number of short-term improvements for the sanitary collection system as well as the wastewater treatment facility. And at the conclusion of the hearing, there's a draft resolution in the council packet for your consideration to adopt that facility plan. This hearing also satisfies a procedural requirement for one of the proposed financing tools that we'll talk about a little bit later. So this hearing essentially is a continuation of some previous discussions that the city council has had. Back in August of 2017, we talked about some ongoing permit negotiations with, with relation to total phosphorus limits for the wastewater plant. I suspect you'll be hearing more about that in the relatively near future. We've had some contact with the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, or MPCA, about that issue. And we have an upcoming meeting sometime in the next month or two. Also talked about asset management needs for the wastewater facility. Most recently, on December 10th, we had a preview of tonight's public hearing talking about some interim improvements that are, that are being recommended as a result of this process. I believe most everyone was in attendance at that meeting, whether it be as a council member or as a member of the audience at that time. So as a result of those previous discussions, we embarked upon a long-term planning process for the wastewater facility that really involved two phases. The first one to look at the existing design of the facility, what the capacity is, look at 20-year growth projections, as well as condition assessment of all of the various processes. Moving into phase two, where we would look at necessary long-term process equipment improvements, and specifically look at four other issues, phosphorus, biosolids, disinfection, and energy. We won't focus on those now, we'll save that for a future date. The idea being this would lead to a long-term 20-year plan for the wastewater plant. Along the way, a number of short-term, more immediate needs were identified, three of those at the wastewater facility, and two of those in the collection system, and that's really the subject of tonight's hearing. We'll talk a lot more about those in detail. Which is leading us to the facility plan being considered tonight, which is what we would consider more of an interim plan. It doesn't include the long-term 20-year projections. That effort will still continue on its own. This table is a summary of the proposed improvements included in the facility plan. Since we're going to talk about each one of these individually, I won't go through this table in detail. I would just note that the facility planning process requires that we talk about the need for the improvements tonight, as well as the alternatives considered. And unfortunately, to do that, we have to get a bit technical, so I'll ask that you bear with me, and I'll try to avoid getting excessively technical on each of these issues. The first proposed improvement is at the wastewater facility, and maybe just a couple of comments about the facility in general, what happens there. So wastewater is collected from throughout the city and is pumped to the wastewater plant. There are a number of treatment processes at the plant that remove contaminants from the wastewater to a point where it can be returned or discharged back to the Red River. That's governed by a permit issued by the MPCA, and there's some pretty stringent requirements on the quality of the water that goes back to the river. So think of this plant as a series of unit processes that treat that wastewater. The very first process at the plant is our bar screens. Fairly simple, physical process. These are intended to remove large solids, rags, flushable wipes, things that can damage downstream equipment and processes. These bar screens, the, the bar screens in existence at the plant today were installed in 1994. They're not capable of handling the, the volumes of flow that we regularly see, so we see surcharging of the channels that lead up to these bar screens. The spacing between the bars is relatively large, 3/4 of an inch, which allows material to pass through. Ideally, we'd like to see those be closer together on the order of a quarter of an inch. And they're essentially beyond their useful life. So we're looking at replacing these, these pieces of equipment. There are two of them at the plant. And we'll just note that for any of this equipment, the atmospheres and conditions that they operate under are relatively harsh in terms of corrosion potential. Typically for equipment, we think of useful life on the order of 15 to 20 years. So for this piece of equipment, the, we looked at four different alternatives. They're listed there, and the format for all of the improvements proposed tonight is we'll show you the alternatives, and the, the blue text identifies the, the recommended alternative. Certainly, if we want to talk about these alternatives in detail, we can do that, I'm assuming maybe not. And so we'll just jump right to the recommendation here is to replace the existing screens with what are called step screens. These screens are capable of handling much larger flows. These screens would also have closer spacing, so we'd get better removal. And one of the primary driving factors behind selection of this type of screen is that we can accomplish it without structural modifications. There are a few, a couple of other pieces of equipment that are really ancillary to the bar screens. There's a belt conveyor that's beyond its useful life. We looked at alternatives for that, and what we're proposing here is a screening washing press that will essentially wash the material that's been removed from the screens, reduce the volume as well as the weight. That material all is shipped to the landfill. And then lastly, a piece of equipment called a grit classifier. And this is essentially just a replacement of an existing piece of equipment in kind, but with stainless steel. The total cost for these improvements is estimated to be just about 1.6 million. The second improvement proposed at the wastewater plant involves what's called a digester cover. So as I'd mentioned, there's a number of processes at the plant to remove contaminants. Essentially, what happens is those contaminants are, are reduced down to a smaller volume of solids that require further treatment, that then can be land-applied on farm fields for the nutrient value. Anorobic digesters are the treatment process that prepares those solids for beneficial reuse for fertilizer value. So what we do is we take those solids, put them in these tanks called anorobic digesters, and what you see here is actually the cover itself, not the full tank, and heat and mix essentially cook this stuff for about 15 days. In that process, we generate a gas, which is about 60% methane. We're able to beneficially reuse that gas by burning it in boilers at the plant and use that for heating the building as well as that process. So in this cover, we, we store that, that methane gas for reuse. It's a flexible membrane cover. It is experiencing some challenges. You'll note that we've applied a large number of patches just within the last couple of years, and so we need to replace that cover. The, the risk here is that if we're not able to beneficially reuse the digester gas that's produced, we'll have to purchase natural gas, and the cost of doing that is about $200,000 per year. So in order to replace that cover, the alternatives considered here were a steel cover versus replacing the cover with a flexible membrane, essentially a replacement in kind. Flexible membrane is by far preferred, would not require structural modifications to the tank. It has a much larger storage capacity, so essentially a replacement in kind. Estimated cost for that is about 675,000. And then lastly, we maintain a fleet of emergency equipment, generators, pumps, as well as some other equipment that we have ready for rapid deployment in the cases, in case of emergencies, for example, power outages, floods, intense rain events, and so on. Previously, a fair amount of this equipment was stored in a building on the site of the Cullen Hockey Arena. That building was demolished with the hockey arena expansion. We moved the equipment from there and are temporarily storing it in a buyout property for the North Morehead Flood Mitigation Project. But that building is scheduled for demolition later this year, so we need to find a home for all of this emergency equipment. So the proposal is to construct a storage building on the wastewater facility site. In terms of alternatives, masonry versus pre-engineered. The wastewater facility itself, constructed back in the 1980s, is primarily masonry or brick. But we do have one building on site that's pre-engineered, and for this purpose, pre-engineered is perfectly satisfactory. So the recommended improvement here is a pre-engineered structure, estimated cost of about 1.3 million dollars. Putting that on the site of the wastewater plant will allow us to tie into the, the heating system that exists on site, which has capacity to do that. This building that we're proposing would be minimally heated, but being able to tie into that existing heating system allows us to maximize the use of the digester gas or methane gas that we produce on site to heat that facility. In terms of location, this is something that, again, the facility planning requirements govern our discussion tonight. We have to identify for the public where these improvements are located. All of the three that we just talked about would be located on site at the wastewater treatment facility. The next two improvements are in the collection system. And maybe just to deviate for a second to talk about the collection system, we're started doing this in reverse order, but, so as wastewater leaves your home or your business, flows, flows through a building service out to the street where we have city sewer main. Most streets in town have sewer mains under them, not all. It's just a network of pipes that collect the wastewater. It's just a network of pipes that collect the wastewater. They're all installed at a slope, and so the wastewater flows by gravity. At some point, the pipe gets too deep, it's uneconomical, and so we install a pump station or what we call a lift station to raise that back up and then allow it to flow by gravity again. The exception being, there's no gravity flow to the wastewater plant. All of the flow to the plant is pumped from one of four pump stations or lift stations. There are about 40, a little over 40 sanitary lift stations scattered throughout the city, which is a very large number for a town of our population, but that totally relates to geography, right? It's so flat. So the next improvement is at one of those sanitary lift stations, happens to be what we call number 14. This lift station is located in the Regal Estates Manufactured Home Park. It's one of our older lift stations, constructed originally in 1966. The map shows the service area. It's a little bit small, but you see the red network of pipes. Those are all pipes that lead, ultimately lead to this lift station, again, roughly about a third of the city, and this is one of those four large pump stations that pumps directly to the wastewater facility. So a failure at this lift station would affect a large number of properties. Again, constructed in 1966, the existing structure is really too small to house properly-sized pumps and various equipment. The structure itself is beyond its useful life. Generally, we would put 50 years' life on a structure for any kind of wastewater application. In addition, there's an area of undeveloped property to the north. It's shown in the black box on that map. We anticipate sometime in the future that property will develop. As our system is currently configured, we would have to add another lift station to service that area, whereas we may, with this project, have the ability to service that without the addition of a new lift station. So the alternatives that we considered here were to upgrade the station in its existing location, to replace the station or relocate and reconstruct the station to the north, or replace, to the south, I'm sorry, or replace the station with the new station to the north. I spent a little bit more time on this one. The cost estimates for all three are shown here, and you'll note that the recommended improvement, new lift station to the north, is not the lowest-cost alternative. There are several reasons for that, which we'll get into a little bit more in the next couple of slides. These next three slides are just layouts for the three locations that were considered as part of the alternative. So this is the existing site. It's a little bit north of Sixth Avenue, and I believe the street you see is Lancaster, if I remember correctly, but this is right within the Manufactured Home Park. So this is reconstruction on the existing site. The red boxes represent the lift station structure. The red lines and the green lines represent sanitary pipes, our sanitary sewers. You'll note, this location is very, very close to the county ditch, and it is also very close to existing homes within the park. I think the closest home is approximately 20 feet away. So that was alternative one. The next alternative was to reconstruct to the south. So the street that you see on the south that curves down is Sixth Avenue North. The red boxes again show the proposed location for the new structure. This happens to be right next to the office for the Manufactured Home Park and actually is on the site of a park for children to play. So there's some obvious negatives to relocating in that location. It's also not a very big site in terms of space needed for the structure. The other alternative, that being to the north, so this is just to the south of Eighth Avenue North. That's the street along the north edge. There's a stormwater pond at this location that we would have to slightly modify and move, but this location is by far the best for a number of reasons, which are really summarized in this slide. So consider this to be, in some regard, non-monetary considerations, comparing the two lowest-cost alternatives, so comparison of the lowest-cost alternative, which was upgrading the existing station versus what's recommended, the new station to the north. For the new station to the north, a recommended alternative, we own the property as opposed to having to acquire additional property if we were to upgrade existing. Access to the north site would be off public streets versus access off private streets. The north location would enhance or increase the buffer between the lift station and private property, and we can also provide service to that undeveloped property that I previously noted without the addition of a new or an additional lift station. And then lastly, I think the most important thing is that the existing station can remain in operation throughout most of the construction. If we try to reconstruct the existing station on site, we're going to have to do what we call bypass pumping, bring in temporary pumping and pump large volumes of wastewater temporarily around the construction site. Pretty challenging, pretty risky operation, so as a result, our recommendation here is to relocate that lift station to the north. And the last recommended improvement here involves rehabilitation of some brick sewers. So we have, in the downtown area, approximately 7,000 feet of brick sewer that was installed by hand back in the 1940s, which has actually performed very well, considering it's 70 years old. We've kept a pretty close eye on this sewer over the years, and we did have an issue last fall with one of these that led us to look at this a little bit closer, and we strongly believe that we should embark upon a process to proactively rehabilitate these sewers. They service a large area of the city. Well, I'll show you a map of the approximate service area. They've lived their useful life, and we have an opportunity here to proactively rehabilitate So really, two alternatives considered here. One, just complete replacement. In other words, dig up the entire length of pipe, dig up, remove the street, dig up the pipe, replace the pipe with new pipe and restore the street. Obviously, very disruptive, as well as very expensive. You'll note in the table on the bottom left, cost estimate to do that is a little over $23 million. The second alternative is to use what's called trenchless lining. So what we do here is work with a supplier to manufacture a liner that can be pulled into the brick pipe and then cured in place, so sometimes it's called cured-in-place pipe. Because of the size of these sewers, these are relatively large sewers, we would need to excavate, but not the entire street, just at the manholes. We'll have to get access to the pipe itself, so it would require excavation at the manholes. Cost to use trenchless lining for these pipes is about, just under $13 million. I do need to note here, though, that our ability to line every segment of pipe that we have, that's brick sewer, will be determined in final design. We're assuming that the condition is such that a liner will be functional, and we won't know that till we get into final design. Because of the size of this project, the magnitude of this project, we're proposing that this be done over a period of four years. A little hard to see on the screen here, but this map is also provided separately in the city council packet. The blue lines here represent where those brick sewers are located. The point being, these are in the heart of the downtown area. And the service area, so the red lines in this map represent, for the most part, there's a little bit of this area that is... Let me back up. This is the service area for sanitary lift station number one, which is approximately the same as the service area for these brick sewers. The red lines represent properties that flow directly to the brick sewers ultimately, and the blue lines are properties or pipes that are pumped or indirectly served by that. So the point is, that's a long way to get there, but the point is, a failure of these brick sewers can have a significant effect on a large number of properties throughout the city. So this is a summary of all five of those projects, along with the estimated cost, by no means insignificant. I do want to note that tonight's potential action, adopting the facility plan, does not authorize construction of any of this. This is simply adopting the plan to proceed forward. All of these projects would be subject to development of detailed plans and specifications. All of these projects would be competitively bid. So the obvious question is, how would we pay for these improvements? So all of these improvements would be financed through the Wastewater Treatment Fund, which is an enterprise fund, supported almost entirely by customer service charges. A project of this magnitude is well beyond the annual budget. The annual budget for that fund is in the range of $9 to $10 million. So we'll need to seek some sort of financing. And the first, and in staff's opinion, best option for this is to seek a Water Pollution Control Revolving Fund loan. This is a statewide program administered by the Minnesota Pollution Control Agency, as well as the Public Facilities Authority. So as a loan, we would need to repay that loan. The debt service would be paid through service charge revenue. The benefit of this program is that the interest rates, this is specifically focused to wastewater and stormwater projects. So the interest rate here is below market rate. It's a subsidized interest rate, typically about 1.5% below interest rates for bonds. So that's a benefit. Somewhat negative side of that is because it's a government program, there's more red tape, right? We have more procedural requirements to go through, such as this facility plan process. The next step in the process is requesting placement on what's called the Intended Use Plan. At some point later this year, the state determines how many projects it can fund from cities all across the state and draws a line. Those above the line get funded, those below don't get funded. We believe we have a good chance of being in the fundable range when that list is issued. So this is one option, and this is the option that we would recommend that the city pursue to finance these improvements. Obviously, many more steps would need to come before the city council, before that was all in place. The other, another option, I should say, another option would be to forego that loan process and just seek a, or issue a general obligation revenue bond. So again, bond, loan. This bond, debt service would be also paid through service charge revenue. The benefit of this option is there are fewer administrative requirements. The downside is the interest rate doesn't get subsidized, and therefore, the interest rate is slightly higher. The last option, which really isn't feasible for this project, would be to use reserves. Our Wastewater Treatment Fund has reserves on roughly the order of magnitude of $5 million or $5 to $6 million, not sufficient to fund the whole project, but what we can do, what we're proposing to do, is use the reserve fund to transition or use incremental rate increases over a period of years rather than a one-time big rate increase. So the next several slides, and we can go through these fairly quickly, I'll just explain this first one in more detail, and then we'll just jump through the next several, are some scenarios of customer rate impacts or rate adjustments that would be required to fund the entire $19 million project. All of these assume a Water Pollution Control Revolving Fund loan at an assumed interest rate of 2.9%, repaid over a period of 20 years. So what's shown here in the bars are the wastewater treatment fund reserves, and the scale for that is off to the left in millions of dollars. What's shown on the blue line are rate increases in percent. The scale in percent is off on the right side. The numbers that are tagged, excuse me, to the blue line represent the monthly increase in the average residential service charge. And for reference, our current average residential service charge is about $30 per month. So if you look at those numbers, that would be added on to that $30 per month. And then lastly, the green line represents the minimum target reserve balance in this fund by city code for enterprise funds, and that's 25% of the annual budget. So assuming roughly a $10 million budget, that line is shown at $2.5 million across all of these different graphs. So what you see going on here is we're proposing various rate adjustments to soften this a bit and not have a huge rate increase with, in one or two years. We're using reserves to buffer that, stay above the minimum recommended reserve, and then ultimately build reserves back up to essentially where they're at now over roughly a 10-year period of time. So this particular option, option one, includes 5% rate increases in 2020 through 23, 3% in '24 through '26, and then 2% thereafter. Another option, and these next two options sort of front-load the rate increases a little bit. This one shows 6% in 2020, 5% in '21 and '22, 4% in '23, 3% in '24 and '25, and 2% '26 through '28. And a third option, even a little bit more front-loaded, is shown in option three, 7% in 2020, 4% '21 through '24, 3% '25, and then 2% thereafter. A last option, which looks very different than the previous three options, would be to introduce another tool to provide funding other than customer charges. Historically, we have funded all rehab of the sanitary collection system and the wastewater facility through user charges. We have not used special assessments. All of those improvements could be funded through special assessments. For example, if we funded the brick sewer rehab through special assessments, the rate increases that would be needed for the balance of the improvements are shown here. I would note that some of our neighbors to the west do use special assessments for projects like sewer rehab. We're not recommending that necessarily, but we wanted to make sure that all of those alternatives were available to the council for consideration. So what this scenario would involve would be much lower rate increases, so you'll note here 3% through 2023 and then dropping to 2%, but we would then have to levy a special assessment to the benefiting area. Again, if you think back to the map for the service area for the brick sewer, very large, a very, very preliminary estimate would be about 9,000 properties, and if we divided that equally amongst the properties, the cost of the brick sewer improvements amongst those properties, it would be an assessment of about $1,400. Again, not something that we're necessarily recommending, but there are trade-offs between rate increases versus special assessments, and I think an opportunity to contrast how we have historically done things, paying for these improvements all through rates, as opposed to some of our neighbors who have lower rates that do use special assessments for those improvements. This table is just a summary of what was in those graphs in terms of projected, excuse me, rate increases. Council does not need to make a decision tonight on how to proceed, but we felt it was very important that you understand the magnitude of what we're talking about in terms of cost and what the impact might be. We do need to include a scenario within the facility plan, but that's not a commitment to that scenario. So what we will do is we'll use option one in the facility plan unless the council has a strong opinion about some other option, and we can, we'll have further discussions as we move forward with these projects about how to implement that. I would say, from an engineering staff perspective, we would probably lean closer to option two or three, front-load a little bit of this rate increase because there are some unknowns moving forward, especially with some of that brick sewer rehab and exactly how that can be accomplished. We can also develop other scenarios. There's a multitude of scenarios that we could look at. Lastly, proposed schedule. So we're on the second line, facility, or actually, the first line, the public hearing for this facility plan. for this facility plan. The second step would be to submit that facility plan by March 1st, which we will do after tonight's hearing. We would recommend that we begin final design on all of these improvements almost immediately. We do have some funds within the wastewater budget this year to do that, probably not enough to complete all of the design, but at least to get that underway. The loan process is dependent upon the state. We would apply for, to be placed on the intended use plan. That intended use plan is issued sometime mid to late summer. So, we would not know eligibility of loan funding until sometime late summer. Assuming we were eligible, this is a very optimistic schedule, we could be in a position to move forward with some of this work this fall. Again, this is an optimistic, maybe even aggressive, schedule, but that's how we would recommend proceeding. So, with that, that's all I have, and I'd be happy to answer any questions. Just want to note a couple of staff members here, Andy Bradshaw, Tom Sop, who are really our lead guys at the wastewater plant and for the collection system, a lot of work on this, as well as a couple of consultants are in the room that have been helping us.
Thank you, Dr. Zimmerman. I think Councilmember Dahlquist has some questions for you.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. The storage for 1.3 million seems like a lot of money for a storage place.
It does.
Do you have any, like, reasons for why?
We've had some pretty lengthy discussions about that, and certainly, as we get into a final design, we'll look very closely at that. I think the option here is the most economical option, and so, it's really about looking at that as we move into final design. I don't want to say that all of these estimates are high, certainly, I hope they are, but if I say they're high, and we come back to you with a higher number yet, that does not look good for Bob. So, what I can tell you is we will look very closely at that as we do the final design.
Councilmember Hendrickson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Bob, you submit a facility plan to the MPCA. What does the MPCA look for?
They've got a checklist, the number of requirements that we have to have looked at, alternatives, we have to have established the need, and several other boxes that they need to check to approve the plan. So, it's procedural mostly.
Is it, does everybody pass? Does every city pass?
Eventually. Typically, what would happen with a facility plan is if they weren't able to check a box, they would tell us what was wrong with it, and we can correct it, until we get to a point where we have a facility plan that can be approved. I think maybe the issue that you're leading up to is, do we get the money or not? It's not really about the facility plan, it's really about how much money the state has available, and that's the intended use plan process that the Public Facilities Authority determines. So, what they do is they take, they have a system where they assign points to each of the projects based on different criteria, and we think we're going to come out pretty well here, especially because the bulk of this cost is for the brick sewer rehab, which is 70 years old and should score relatively high in their process. But, we'll see how that all plays out midsummer.
Thank you.
Great question, though.
Councilmember White.
Thank you, Mayor Dodd. I have two questions, Dr. Zimmerman. So, the first one is, if you could just talk a little bit more, looking at the cost of the brick sewer rehabilitation, so I know that's a big-ticket item, but I know from conversations with you that you've talked about how much more expensive it is if we don't do something and things start to fail. And if you could just share a little information, and we've seen that with the failure that we had on Main, right?
Yeah, emergency work, so if we have a failure of a brick sewer, and the challenge with these brick sewers, I originally would have characterized this sort of as a domino effect, but somebody else characterized it more of a zipper effect. Once the bricks start failing, and you actually excavate to try to replace part of it, they just all start collapsing. So, essentially, what could happen is you could have an entire block of sewer fail and have to do an emergency repair. Now, we were fortunate with the one that we did experience, in that it was in the fall, and the conditions were favorable to actually do work. You can imagine if we had a brick sewer failure last week, or the week before, under those kinds of conditions, emergency repair would be extremely costly. So, doing this proactively is really important.
Can I just have my second question?
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, my second question, looking at, just, you mentioned the possibility of special assessment, and so, just comparing what it would cost for the individual ratepayers if we did, say, option three compared to what it would cost for those 9,000 households. I just, looking at option three, just doing the math really quickly, over 10 years, it looks to me like the each, you know, each person would pay about $144 over the course of those 10 years, whereas, if we do it through special assessment, those 9,000 people would pay $1,400, so 10 times more, and these are the same people, many of the same households that have already, are paying the special assessment for the 2021 underpass and potentially for the 11th Street underpass. So, I just want to get that on the record.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Who was first? Councilmember Carlson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Two questions. For the MPCA, do they ever partially fund anything? Like, if you submit the plan, would they say it's either all or nothing, or would they say, we'll do the brick sewer, but not the other portions?
I guess anything's possible, but we're proposing this essentially all as one project, one facility plan. So, the concept we're proposing is it's a package deal, and I'm fairly confident that's the way it would proceed.
Okay, because I know that you had mentioned that there was a limited amount of funds available, so that's more along the lines of, if it's a package deal, then we would.
Yeah, it's more about how they assign points to the types of improvements than, and again, the bulk of ours, I mean, even the other improvements are replacing aging systems, and so, I think we'll be fine. I don't think breaking it up would, maybe the answer is, breaking it up, would that make it better? And I don't think we would need to do that.
Okay. And then, my second question was about the storage facility. Is the plan to build it bigger than the amount of equipment that we have in order to?
Just slightly.
Just slightly?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Duran.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have two questions. First one, I ask all the time, you're coordinating with MPS, I would assume, on all projects, because you know they have a very aggressive water main replacement plan. Anytime we dig, it's beneficial for them to be involved so they can.
So, as, great, great point, and as we do final design, we definitely will, yes.
Okay. And then, just my second quick question, when will this be brought back to us for final approval? When will we know if you get the?
I believe it's going to be in the mid to late summer timeframe.
Okay, so, we should expect to see this again late summer?
Yes.
Okay.
Councilmember Gertz.
If we draw our reserves down, does that have any impact on the vitality of that fund?
I'll look at the finance director for that, for an answer to that question. We've done this before with projects, so it's really a question of how comfortable the finance director is, as well as the city council and city manager, with how far down you want to draw that reserve. I mean, we can adjust these and keep it higher, we can draw it lower. These are just examples.
And then, as it relates to the building that you're planning on building, have you researched other buildings in town that might be for sale, that we could probably purchase instead of building new?
We just, we talked about that. We did not do significant research on that. We can do that. One of the benefits of building it where we're proposing is the ability to tie into the existing heating plant for the facility. So, if we, maximizing the use of the methane gas produced will help reduce the overall heating cost for that facility. May not override, depending on what's available. We can do some research, though, just to verify there isn't.
I think that would be good. And then, in terms of the schedule, here you tell Councilmember Duran that we'll see this late summer, but according to your schedule here, you start your final design here in three weeks. So, we're really approving the full monty here, because if you're going to start doing the full design, then you advertise for bids in August. Is that what we're doing tonight, is approving this project short of awarding contracts?
So, the next step would really, before we can award any bids, the next step really would be, I believe, when we receive the, when the intended use plan is issued, and I think about that, there may not be a specific council action required at that point, but there would be some requirement for a loan application. So, I'm thinking that that would be the next step, even before awarding any bids.
But, tonight, we're approving for you to design the entire?
We would recommend that we proceed with design, but certainly, if the council would like to talk about this more, we can do that.
So, we're approving a $19 million project tonight, short of awarding. I'm not saying that I'm against these things, because, you know, deferred maintenance will cost you in the long run, but just for council's information, it is a fairly big step tonight.
I think Madam Volkers wishes to have a clarification.
I do, but I think I have, it folds into another question for Bob. So, I was thinking the council was just adopting the proposal, or the plan tonight. You were going to go out and see if you get the loan. At some point, you have to come back to the council, because the funding has to be decided, rate, special assessments, et cetera. And at that point, I thought the project could be approved. That gives the council time to consider and to, this is a major thing, not that it's not critical, I'm just saying it's a $19 million decision, and I wasn't thinking they were making it tonight.
No, and that wasn't the intent. It wasn't the intent to lock into anything. There are a number of steps the council will have to take. There'll be a loan application. We would not advertise for bids without the council approving a resolution, authorizing an advertisement for bids, and so, there will be opportunities to address the financing piece of this, albeit recognize that even at that point, we're still going to be working off of estimates as opposed to actual bids, right? And to some degree, we will be for four years, because the brick sewer will be four years. So, you are, in a sense, authorizing a fair amount of work, moving to final design, but we won't advertise for bids until we get council authorization to do that.
So, if we didn't get approval from the discounted rate fund, then, you know, Plan B would be to bond for it and pay a bit of a higher interest rate, and to me, at that point, before we jump into the whole thing, maybe we end up having to do phases, so in a subsequent year, we might be able to apply. You know, obviously, the lining of the brick sewer is the largest portion of that, maybe you do some every year, because you have a completion of 2024, so, you know, it's a four- to a five-year project, and instead of awarding the whole thing, maybe you do a stepped approach, depending on the availability of the short, or the lower-interest funding.
Correct.
And then, final question, when you line the sewers, the existing sewer, do you end up shutting areas of town down while that's done, and just maybe give me the Reader's Digest version of the process, so, you know, residents would know kind of what they would be expecting to see, if there's a short-term interruption of their sanitary sewer service, or?
Absolutely. So, manhole, pipe, manhole. We're going to line this pipe. So, in this case, most of these pipes are big enough. We're going to have to excavate in the street, remove the manholes, which, incidentally, most are brick anyway. As they're doing that work, all of the wastewater flow from upstream is pumped with temporary pumps, or bypass pumps, around the construction site. So, all of the upstream properties still receive service. However, those properties that are along that segment won't have service temporarily. Now, for smaller pipes, it's generally only a few hours. I'm not exactly sure of the duration that it will take for these larger pipes, but it could be, I expect it will be longer than just a few hours. I don't think it's going to be days, for example, but certainly.
And is, can it be done throughout all four seasons, or are we talking, you know, summer and fall only?
I'm not sure they would do it in the dead of winter, but, you know, for example, 30 below, I'm sure they're not going to do it, but I think they can do it pretty much year-round. There are benefits to doing it late fall, early winter, in that that is the time the collection system is least susceptible to being influenced by higher flows from rain events, for example, and so, the bypass pumping is not as rigorous. So, I would not be a bit surprised that we see interest in doing it during that timeframe, late fall, early winter.
Okay, I appreciate you being patient with my questions, but I would certainly encourage to do some research on alternative facilities that might be available, that could be more cost-effective, and, you know, just the timing of the discounted loan rate, to me, would be important, because it costs money, and our ratepayers will end up having increases every year.
So, one thing we'll need to check on in conjunction with that, we'll go through that exercise. I'm not sure what all the loan funding, you know, for example, buying a commercial building off-site, if that would be eligible for that loan funding or not. So, it just may be a little more detailed exercise than one might think to begin with, but absolutely happy to do it.
So, how many square feet of a building are you planning on building for that million?
So, what's proposed is 100 feet by 99 feet. Why 99 feet? If you have 10,000 feet, you trigger a whole new type of review under the state's sustainable building system requirements that adds cost to the facility, so 10,000 square feet.
Okay, so, roughly $130 a square foot. Okay, thank you.
Any further questions for Doctors Zimmerman? Pursuant to other rules, is there anyone here in the audience that would like to speak on this public hearing? And I'll repeat, is there anyone here in the audience that wishes to speak regarding this public hearing? Seeing, can I get a motion to close the public hearing? Motion moved by Councilperson Hendrickson, seconded by Councilmember Watson Curry. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. So, Madam Volkers, as far as the resolution, then, should this be?
Separate.
Okay, okay, all right. So, is there a motion to approve the resolution to adopt the facility plan?
Second.
Motion moved by Councilmember White, seconded by Councilmember Duran. All in favor, please. Sorry. Councilmember Gertz.
So, we're just adopting the plan, we're not authorizing proceeding with anything else?
Correct, that's how I'm reading the resolution, just to adopt the plan only.
Okay, thank you.
So, I seconded by Councilmember Durand, I'm sorry. Councilmember Hendrickson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, Bob, I'm from northern Minnesota, I'm some kind of slow, but, so, if we adopt it, there's zero money, except for the work you're going to?
Correct. I would just say that, separate from your consideration of that resolution, we do have funds available in our annual budget to proceed with design, and under the criteria for our master services agreement, Chris can sign task orders with consultants to begin design without further council action.
I just need to clarify. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay. Any other further questions for Dr. Zimmerman before we proceed with the vote? Do we need to repeat the motion in second? Are we good on that? Okay. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Zimmerman. Now, like we proceed to agenda item number 11, which is to consider resolutions for 8th Street and 13th Avenue North, street improvements.
Mr. Mayor, I think Councilmember Gertz might have something on, a question on this item.
Absolutely. Councilmember Gertz.
Okay. So, again, I'm not, not opposed to, I asked for motions 11 and 12 to be taken off. Again, more of an informational item for the rest of the council here. You had a hearing, or a public hearing for both of these projects. The council packet says there are about 60 people that showed up, and, you know, just was there feedback? I know that there's always been feedback on sidewalk extensions and connections, and there's, we have a policy of how people can address that, and it's in the communication, so I appreciate that. And, so, whenever we're, we're doing, we're adopting stuff like this, and we're assessing 20% of the project, 80% goes on the debt levy. So, I mean, we're, you know, several hundred thousand dollars that we're approving tonight to be added to the debt levy. So, in the fall, when we start our budget for 2020, we'll have already approved this increase in the debt levy as we go. And that was the only reason for taking both items off. I'm not opposed to the, to items, I just want to make that clear, that as we approve this stuff, we got to keep in mind that it impacts our tax situation next year. So, I don't know if you want to add any more to that, Tom, or...
Yeah, I can. So, I'm not sure if you saw, I did, I tried to respond to some of that earlier today. I don't know if you, if you had a chance to, if that got forwarded on. Yeah, so that, the meeting that we held in January was actually, it was a newer process for us. Normally, we just rely on the public hearing that's held that, per statutes, we have to do prior to awarding the bid, and that's kind of when all the project is sprung on the public, and we sometimes get complaints about that. And partly because of this new sidewalk policy, and partly to try to be more responsive to the public and get them involved earlier, we decided we'd try an informational meeting earlier on while we were still finalizing the design for the project, and give people a chance to see what we're proposing and to provide some feedback on it. And what we did was, we did it for all of our CIP rehab projects. So, we're trying to bundle four different projects. So, back in December, we had the five-year capital improvement plan update, and we had, there's four primary areas we're talking about. The Oakport Streets area, which the council considered that back in, it was the second meeting in January, the 28th, I think. And then, there's this 8th Street and 13th Avenue North project, and this Belsley East area, which we're considering tonight. And then, at the next council agenda, we're hoping to bring the Center Square 20th Avenue South area. So, that's just south of Concordia, where they've got the football field. It's those houses in that area. So, we had those four areas at this meeting, and we weren't sure what to get because there's times we send out assessment notices to thousands of people and get a half a dozen to show up. So, we were actually very impressed by the number that came, and it's encouraging to us, and so, we're, you know, we're definitely planning and doing this in the future, too. Out of that, a lot, maybe almost half of them, I think, were from the Oakport area. And I think, you know, this is kind of a newer process for them. They haven't seen us doing CIP projects before, so that might be one of the reasons we got as many. But yeah, there was, there was quite a few from the Oakport area. The next largest group at that meeting was, I believe, from the Center Square 18th Avenue area. And we didn't actually have a sign-in sheet. That's something else maybe we can do next year as well. So, this is more based on the feedback we received, and after we did our presentation, we had boards for the four projects in different parts of the room. And by far, the two busiest boards were Oakport and the Center Square 20th Avenue area. We had a few people that asked questions about 8th Street and 13th Avenue North, and mostly what we were getting there was construction-related impacts. I recall there was a person that operates a daycare that's kind of in the middle of the block, and she was concerned about how people would get in and out, and we talked about how we can try to phase construction to minimize some of those impacts. Mainly, we talked about that, you know, we put out door hangers to notify people and give them contacts, and so that any questions they have as construction gets going, they have a number to call, someone who can come and meet with them and explain what's going on, and, you know, just so we can keep people well-informed. And as long as we're doing that, they should be able to have access most of the time, and if there's times when we'd be cutting that access back, we'll provide them some advance notice. So, that was the main questions we had really on 8th and 13th was, was some of that. The Center Square area, there were definitely people that were very concerned about us trying to fit sidewalks in. And if you're familiar with that area, a couple of the streets there, the right-of-way is only 40 feet wide. So, they've got 20 to 24-foot-wide streets, but if you try to put sidewalks in, it probably means taking out whatever trees are present. I mean, it's very difficult to squeeze it in per the policy we're proposing it. We were not surprised at all by the feedback that we were getting, that people were probably going to oppose the sidewalk. And so, we sent the letters out, and that's per the policy. So, we sent letters out to each of these areas that are going to get sidewalks, and we're getting the feedback. And per the policy, if 75% of the people that are on a block say, "We don't want the sidewalk to go in," then we'll drop it from the project. And it doesn't require any council action to do that, that's just the way the policy will work. And so, it's our way of trying to fill in some of these areas in town that don't have sidewalks or have incomplete sidewalks. And so, and I think, you know, another reason Center Square, 18th Avenue, there's really no sidewalks on some of those streets. Some of them have sidewalks, the north-south, and they're relatively, I think they were there for the entire block. So, there's some connectivity, but there are a few gaps that we're trying to address. With the 8th Street and 13th Avenue North projects, there, there was some areas where sidewalk was most of the way down the street, and then the last two houses, it isn't there. And so, we're fairly confident that in those neighborhoods, the people are accustomed to the sidewalks, and we'll probably end up having those stay in the project. So, but yeah, that was, that was what a lot of the feedback was.
I had another question, but I slipped my mind here, so if there's somebody else that's got it.
Well, I, and I do, one of the other questions that you had raised, so that, regarding the financing and how it affects the tax levy. And currently, in the city of Morehead, the median value home is approximately $180,000. And every million dollars that we bond for would add about $65,000 to the tax levy for us to make the payments on the bonds, and that's the million dollars of city share. Okay? So, if we, and as it turns out, these two projects that we're looking at tonight, the city share currently estimated would require about $1 million. So, basically, that would mean the tax levy would have to go up $65,000 to make those payments on the bond. And what that means to a median value home, every $100,000 increase is $5, so this was, this would be about a $65,000 increase. So, the property taxes would go up, I believe for the 8th Street and 13th Avenue North, it was $1.90 per year, and the Belsley East area would, would raise, on a median value home, would raise the taxes $1.40. So, all total, the two projects, it's about $3.30 that we'd be committing to at this time.
The, one thing that I was going to point out is, I looked through my emails, I didn't see any communication from you, so if you could forward that to the council so they have some of that, some of that response, I'd appreciate that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
We will do that.
Any questions for Mr. Trowbridge? Okay. Thank you, sir, for the information.
Yep.
Thank you, Councilmember Gertz, for bringing that to our attention, for sure. Hey, Councilmember Gertz, that also addresses your questions for 11 and 12. Okay. So, then, with that being said, since this is off consent, do we need to have a motion to approve the resolutions for such? Mr. Shockley.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Since it's off consent, yeah, you need a motion in a second to approve the resolutions. You can take both items A and B of 11 in one motion. And then, you'd have to go to item 12, and you can take that as A and B can be taken together as a single motion.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification, Mr. Shockley.
I approve approval of 11A and B on the...
I second.
The motion has been made by Councilmember Gertz, seconded by Councilmember Watson Curry. All in favor of the motion, please approve by, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And regarding item number 12, A and B, is there a motion to approve those resolutions? Motion moved by Councilmember Hendrickson, seconded by Councilmember Dahlquist. All in favor of said motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. I believe we moved down to, is 18 off?
No, it was just a new handout.
Just a new handout, okay. Number 19, council reports.
For the public housing, they still need an appointment, and they got bid openings for the elevator last Friday, and I believe they are closing on the loan for both the Sharpview elevator and the Riverview Heights elevators. And they are currently waiting for the physical needs assessments from four companies, and, and they're watching for the government shutdown. They were scared last time, but before we got to the meeting, they had opened up again. And so, they're still concerned that they might shut down again because they're affected by HUD. So, and that was it for the meeting.
Thank you, Councilmember Dahlquist. Any other council members? Councilmember Hendrickson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to thank Steve Moore in the Public Works Department for the fine work they did clearing the roads in the last two weeks. We got wobbled by two blizzards, and it gives me and hopefully the residents peace of mind knowing that the roads are going to get plowed. And I know there's snow hills out, but, you know, it was two nasty storms, so good work.
I second it also, Councilmember Hendrickson. Councilmember Duran.
Yep, I just have one from MPS. At our last meeting, Chris Knutson, Water Division Manager, was, presented a big change that will be occurring with the water filtration system. They are replacing their, and I had to write all this down so I would make sure I got it correct. Their 24 inches of anthracite media, which is a filtration mechanism, with 24 inches of granular activated carbon, which is supposed to improve quality. It will add additional protection from pathogens and particles. And that project will happen between April and September, and there should be no disruption to service. So, it was interesting when it was presented, I just, I don't, I don't speak it as eloquently as Chris does.
Thank you for that updated report. Councilmember Carlson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to again remind you, Mr. Mayor, and the rest of the city council of the open house at the library this Wednesday at 5:00 PM. Again, this is our opportunity to get our photo taken for the Morehead Reads marketing campaign that the library is going to do, and I'm modeling the shirt that you can purchase at the library for $12. And for members of the audience, using yours as an example, I also have bookmarks for everyone who attends tonight, for everyone. Also, it is Black History Month, and every Wednesday at the library is going to be a free film, 6:30 PM, and it's free, and they offer popcorn, too. So, that was it.
Thank you for the update. Just so everyone is aware, I will be in St. Paul on Wednesday, so unfortunately, I will have to miss the open house. So, I apologize in advance.
I would imagine that they would make a special time available to you to get your picture taken for the posters, however.
Absolutely. I will show up for that, but not on Wednesday. But I will. Councilmember Watson Curry.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I didn't have any formal meetings to attend, but I did attend the open house project for the MetroGrow, which is the 2045 input planning through MetroCog. There is a survey, survey still available online through the Metro, Metropolitan Council of Government, so if you type in metrogrow.org and scroll to the bottom, there's still a survey available. And was someone else going to highlight this input, too? This was rescheduled due to weather also, so I wanted to remind folks, the US Highway 10 and 75 corridor study was rescheduled due to extreme cold weather, so they were not sending out postcards again. So, it is scheduled tomorrow, Tuesday, the 12th, from 4:30 to 6:30, and it's in the commons of the high school, and I believe, I believe there's a presentation, is it 4:45? It doesn't say on this page. Open house during that time, but there is a formal presentation, I believe. Okay. And then, I just wanted to thank, the Red River Market hosted their first winter market at the Yom Kumpst on Saturday, and they had estimated close to 3,000 people in attendance. So, that was a really cool opportunity, and have vendors in all floors, and could get a cup of coffee right next to the ship, so it was a really unique opportunity, and just wanted to thank them for hopping across the river. And that's the end of my report.
Thank you very much. Any other reports? I guess I'll give a brief report, and I think, Madam Volkers, you'll be talking about the Legislative Action Day.
I listened. Wait, are you working on it?
Well, we can kind of tag team it, if that's okay. Been kind of a whirlwind last few weeks, so I'll be succinct. I had the pleasure with other council members to go down to Legislative Action Day in St. Paul. We did meet with our legislators locally here, Representative Lean, Representative Mark Hartz, and Senator Ekin. Thank you. Yeah, I know, it's been one of those days. Right. And so, they are actively going and charging forward to do what they can to address legis, or, sorry, local government aid, and a few other things that are of interest to our city and very important. I wanted to commend also City Manager Volkers, as well, as well as Lisa Bodie, and Scott Hutchins, thank you very much, for their work. They're doing a lot of good things for us and our city, and so, it was a very productive day. Governor Walz was there in attendance, also spoke very highly about his efforts to... Governor Walz was there in attendance, also spoke very highly about his efforts to fund better LGA, local government aid, so I thought that was a really productive day. I'm just clicking here to make sure I don't miss anything. Did have also lunch with President Kraft at Concordia College last Friday. It was a very also productive meeting. Concordia is doing good work also in our community, also looking at ways to coordinate and collaborate with Concordia and all of our universities here in town for efforts to promote a lot of big ideas. I'll leave it at that in hopes that we can work together in improving our relationships. Also, I was in Washington DC this past week with the Fargo-Morehead Diversion Authority. I was there for a couple of days. We had the chance to meet with legislators from North Dakota and Minnesota regarding the project. I guess no news is good news, so we're moving forward with that, and I think we'll be some follow-up with the commission here, I would assume, by the end of the week. And so at this point, we're meeting weekly regarding that topic as well. I think for city, that might be all that I have, unless anyone has, I'm missing something that somebody might have saw me at and I'm not remembering. Oh, yes. I did go down to St. Paul yesterday to speak at Senator Klobuchar's presidential announcement as well. Was called about that on Friday, showed up on Sunday. It was a good event. Tried to do my best to promote the city at the event, and it was an all-good experience. I don't think I've ever spoken in front of that many people before, so hopefully I don't embarrass the city or you all in any way, but that was a good experience. Otherwise, I think that might be it for me. I'll pass it on to Madam Volkers.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just want to give a brief update on the city prosecutor office, what's going on. Tomorrow, we have our sixth meeting, six, with all the other Clay County cities, as we're planning and discussing the prosecution services and setting up the offices and handling the cases. And we've got a really good group going there that we've met six times to set this up or to talk and to communicate. So we're really appreciative for everybody's, all the other cities in Clay County and their partnership on that. All the staff began work the week of either January 28th, well, that week, January 28th. We have Attorney Steve Beatlesbacher, paralegal Erin Files. She started, and he started, Monday, January 28th. Then Attorney Alex Stock and legal assistant victim witness specialist Lacy Johnson started January 30th, so all the staff are in place. Then they began prosecution services on that Friday, February 1st. So far, they've had daily court hearings to include like arraignments, lockups or in custody appearances, court trials on the traffic offenses, misdemeanor pretrial hearings, omnibus waiver hearings, Rule 8 hearings, and contested hearings. All jury trials set so far have been resolved, so that's good. They are busy. The office continues to work with the IT in obtaining all the softwares that are necessary. Our IT department has been great, and they want to, me to offer a shout-out to our IT department because it's all new for everybody, this software that is needed to manage all these cases. We don't have all the information, everything's not hooked up yet, so in the interim, Erin and Lacy have been reaching out to the police department to obtain the case information, to even get the cases entered into the system. We don't have any information, so that's kind of hard. We don't have the ICR numbers, we don't have anything on these cases that are coming through. However, the good news is everything's paperless, and that office are completely paperless. They might be the first department in our city to be paperless completely, so that's great. You walk in there, there is no paper, so they're doing great. And then the last thing is about that office, they've met personally with every single police department, city police department in Clay County that we're servicing, and they've been helpful in setting up the parameters and sentencing guidelines and having those discussions with the chiefs and the police officers, and those discussions hadn't been held in the past, so about how to handle the cases. So everything's flowing really well. I have a meeting tomorrow with them, and I'm going to break the news to them about the cost of all this, so I will break the news to you after I total everything, so that will be next meeting. So, and I say, break the news on purpose. So, anyway, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Volkers. Any other comments, reports from councilmembers? And I believe, item number 21, we will move into executive closed session. Is there a motion to move to go into executive closed session?
Second.
Motion is Councilmember Gertz.
I have a conflict of interest on item number B, so I'll attend the executive session for item number A and then leave the executive session.
Thank you for that clarification, Councilmember Gertz. So Councilmember Carlson has made the motion, seconded by Councilmember White. All in favor of said motion, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign.
Is there a motion to adjourn the meeting this evening?
I've got a motion by Councilmember Carlson. Councilmember, second by Councilmember Durand. I don't have a quorum. Thank you very much. Meeting adjourned. Good night, everyone.